David, I would like to say good afternoon to the council and to the audience. It's one o'clock, February 18th, 2021. I hereby call to order the regular meeting of the Rancho Mirage City Council, Library and Observatory Board, the Housing Authority Board, and the City Council representing the Redevelopment Successor Agency. Isaiah, would you lead us in a flag's form, please?
Sure, Mayor. I'll ask Gabe Cotting, our Director of Marketing, to lead us today.
No worries.
Ready? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic which stands, one nation, indivisible, indivisible and just so. Well, we got through that. Kristi, could you handle the local flag?
Certainly. Councilmember Kite?
Here.
Councilmember Smartridge?
Here.
Councilmember Townsend?
Here.
Mayor Protem Wile?
Here.
Mayor Hobart?
Here. Okay, Isaiah, could you take us to non-agenda public comments, please?
Certainly, Mayor. We will now open our non-agenda public comment period. This is an opportunity for a member of the public to speak on issues that are not on our agenda for a maximum of three minutes per speaker. If you are participating remotely, you would hit the raised hand button on the Zoom platform, or if you're on the telephone, you would hit star nine now to make a non-agenda public comment. Before we go to our remote audience, we'll go to those speakers that are here in person. Kristi, do we have any cards?
Yes, we have two. First is Maggie Lockridge.
Thank you, members of the council. My name is Maggie Lockridge. I am a resident of Rancho Mirage. I'm here today speaking on behalf of a letter from Patty Newman, who's unable to be here today because of the time this meeting is being held. Although unable to attend the city council meeting, I want to share some historical information regarding the city council meeting times. While I no longer have meeting minutes, I do have personal calendars for reference. In 1993, when my late husband, Arthur Newman, was on the council, the twice-monthly city council meetings were held at 6:30 PM. In 1994, the meetings were often held at 7:00 PM, with some meetings starting as late as 7:30 PM to accommodate special circumstances. Some members of council were opposed to the evening meeting time and wanted to meet during the afternoon. While Arthur had no personal preference as to meeting time, he was concerned about the possible disenfranchisement of those residents who would not be able to attend meetings during the workday. The council's position at that time was that population of the city was largely retired, and that meeting during the day would be easier for the council members and the staff. On April 20th, 1995, the council began meeting at 3:00 PM, and the time change was due only to the convenience and preference of the council members. The council meetings continued with 3:00 PM time through 1995, '96, and '97, until December 1st of 1997, when the council changed the meeting time to 1:00 PM. Once again, the change in meeting time was strictly the convenience of the council, and certainly not due to interest or request of any constituents. Thankfully, longtime resident Susie Harvey has brought the meeting timing issue to light with her Desert Sun column in February 6, 2021. I would encourage both council members and city staff to have concern for the residents of the city rather than their personal convenience and return the meeting time to evenings so that more constituents can take part in Rancho Mirage government. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. The next speaker?
Patrick Lowry.
Good afternoon. Patrick Lowry, 17-year resident of Rancho Mirage. I'm talking here today on the Employee Benefits Program. And I think that each of you should have received my draft of what I would be talking about today. I hope you have. I had the opportunity, if you want to call it that, of listening to a couple of people talking when I was getting my cup of coffee on the benefit programs of the city. And they had mentioned that the city programs are 100% paid for, the medical programs, 100% paid for by the city. And that kind of triggered something in me. We don't commonly see that today. I certainly don't, and I'm an expert in health and welfare programs and benefits and consult on those. So I wanted to bring that to the attention of the council. And here's what I concluded, and I need to ask more questions. And I have a couple of those questions before the city now. I've just not heard back. I looked at two elements here. One is, what's the program? And the program is a PERS program, where you can select among HMOs and PPOs. And I'm assuming, because we have 100% paid program, most people are picking the PPOs. The other aspect of this is, whatever the plan doesn't pay, this base plan from PERS, the city comes in and self-funds. So in other words, if you have a co-payment on the PERS plan, the city will self-fund and pay that for you. Up to $3,000 for a single employee, $6,000 for a family. That's generous. Now, I talked to a couple of cities: Indio, Indian Wells, Palm Desert, Cathedral City. Palm Desert also has a 100% plan. The others don't. What they do is they attach what they're going to pay for benefits to the lower-cost plans. So if you want to buy up, you must first take the HMO, then you can buy up to a PPO if you want to, but you've got to pay the difference. Again, we don't have that here. It's 100%, no matter what you pick or select. That's unusual, and it costs us a ton of money. Just the self-funded portion, what the active plan, base plan, doesn't pay, that's self-funded, paying the coinsurance, the co-payments, and whatever else the plan doesn't pay, sorry for being so redundant, that's over $300,000 a year, just paying for what your plan doesn't pay. So here's what I did. Here are my conclusions, anyway. We're spending too much on our health and welfare programs. And I understand their unions. I understand the value of benefits. There needs to be a contribution formula, meaning that employees have to contribute something toward their plan. Or if they don't want to contribute, pick the lowest-cost plan. That the city should pay for. That makes sense.
Your time's up. Please wrap up.
Okay, thanks very much. You need to have a goal of getting rid of the old PEBB liability. Remember when you're in PERS, you have to pay for retiree's for a lifetime. That costs us a lot of money. So far, over $200,000 has been set aside by the city to pay that bill. So I requested you folks, apply an action plan that allows you to take a look at everything when it comes to employee benefits. Renewals are coming up soon, next couple of months. And then find out what your broker can do for you to give you some ideas. There are better plans, less expensive plans than PERS out there. Listen, I really appreciate this. Thanks so much. I'm only touching the surface, so forgive me where I've made some mistakes, but let's see if we can't learn. Thanks so much.
Thank you for your comment. Seeing no more speaker cards, is there anyone else here in person that did not fill out a speaker card that wishes to make a non-agenda public comment? Okay, we'll move on to our remote audience. Mr. Brad Anderson, go ahead.
Yes, hi. My name's Brad Anderson. I live at 37043 Berber Drive in the city here. And just a few things. Hopefully, the minutes will be correct, because I'm going to skip around on a few topics. But I've asked, or I've made several, well, two requests to use city equipment, as in the protector and all this stuff to have the public see what I'm talking about. And I was denied that. Apparently, this equipment is not for public access during public comment. And if I submit anything to the council, I'm supposed to submit eight copies? And I thought, that's kind of odd in the internet age. But that tells me that maybe the agendas are delivered in hard copies to the council members, which I can see on how the meetings are conducted at times. But anyway, I wanted to comment on that, and apparently, I'm not, I can't access that, those information or that city equipment. And I made several email attempts to contact the city's ADA compliance officer and the city manager, and I have yet to hear back from them. And this is all concerning access to meetings at City Hall. And I find that the city tends to not answer things that they don't want to have any involvement in. But again, it leaves the residents at a disadvantage when the city doesn't operate for them. And I want to comment again on a ministerate citation that the city issued me, and we went through a hearing process, and I can honestly say it's a kangaroo court. And if anybody's out there and had issues with this, please contact me, because this is not right. And there's a better way to do that, and the city attorney was less than competent. So anyway. And that goes into the, you know, I think, there's an organization called the Hero and You Foundation. It's ran by some people in Tammas area, and it supports my neighbors that I've had issues with, was Karen and Tony Barone, for years. And I'm going to go ahead and pick that apart later, but there's a lot of issues there. So I'll submit written testimony on that later, too. But, and again, for the times of meetings, definitely should be in the evening when people can participate. And that's all I have. Hey, thank you.
Thank you for your comment. The next speaker will be Ron Sharro.
Good afternoon. My name is Ron Sharro. I'm a resident of Versailles in Rancho Mirage. One of the things that, one of the magnets that drew me to this community 10 years ago was the culture of the city council and the city in general. I had friends who lived in Versailles, and they raved about the way the city was managed and all the amenities of the city. And so I bought a home here. That was 10 years ago. Since then, I've been inundated with emails and people who wannabes, for lack of a better word, people who want to run for city council and change the culture of this city. And they sent me an email, asked me to respond, and I sent my response to the city council. And I'd like to read it to you now. The Rancho Mirage City Council is one of the most inclusive governing bodies in this state. As free politicians motivate by a quest for power, and like each of the political wannabes that have attempted to gain council seats by inventing untrue reasons to change the unique culture of Rancho Mirage, this city council has fostered the only city in the state of California to maintain a debt-free budget with a surplus every year, which has been utilized to add benefits to the community without incurring debt. For example, its award-winning public library, observatory, free ambulance service for residents, synchronized traffic lights in our beautiful public park, just to name a few. It is the reason they have successfully defended their seats on the council every year or every election period. Every council meeting is open to the public and videotaped from the flag, pledged to the flag to its conclusion. Then it's aired on public access TV for anyone who's interested in viewing their actions. Fortunately, any resident of the city who's unhappy with the way the city's being managed or the things that the city council does has the freedom to move to any other city in the valley and just change the culture of that city if they wish. I'm perfectly happy with the way the city's run. And I want to thank the mayor and city council for the great job that they do. That's my comment. That was a letter I sent to this group, this unidentified group. So I thank you. Thank all of you.
Thank you for your comment. Seeing no one else that wishes to make a non-agenda public comment, we will close that portion of the meeting. And I will turn it back over to you, Mr. Mayor, for council member comments.
It would take a minute or if anybody who has comments. I don't see hands being elevated, but yes.
I'll make a comment.
Go ahead, Ben.
Mr. Mayor, I, probably the same as other members of the council, have received comments about the meeting time as well as when our elections are held. I have talked to numerous people, and I must tell you that the vast majority want to be home with their families from 4:00 to 7:00 in the afternoon. They don't want to be at a meeting at City Hall. In addition, if meetings are running late, they don't want to drive at night. They say that if there is an issue that's important to them, they will come to City Hall for a 1:00 meeting. In addition, I anticipate that even when the pandemic issue is resolved, we are still going to have the ability to comment remotely so that it doesn't preclude somebody from using a telephone or Zoom and participating in a council meeting. So as I say, the vast majority, and I don't mean close, the vast majority prefer a 1:00 meeting rather than a later time. In addition, they comment about when our elections are held, in April, as opposed to nationally. What they're saying is, when it's in April, their mailbox is not loaded with material from all of the different elections that are going on and all of the different offices, that they can concentrate on the local election, they can read what's going on, and they're not confused with a lot of other dialogue. Again, much prefer the April election. And the last point is that we hear that the demographics of Rancho Mirage are changing. It's getting younger. I don't know where people are getting this information. I'd like to see it. But the average age in Rancho Mirage is basically 66. Our largest-selling residential development at the present time is Del Webb. They have sold 600 homes. They've recorded approximately 500. It is a 55-plus requirement to buy a home in there, hardly for younger people. So that again, when I get information like this, I certainly would like to receive something that substantiate those figures. Because the people that I talk to, as well as those that communicate to me, again, reiterate, leave the meetings for 1:00. Leave our election time, our period for April. And again, the age element is at 66, and I have not seen it getting younger. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much.
All right, Mr. Mayor, I also would like to speak.
You may speak right now.
Okay, thank you. Because I also would like to address the two articles that were recently published in the Desert Sun and the topics that have been discussed so far today. One of the articles was titled "Rancho Mirage Trying to Suppress Civic Participation." The other was titled "Petition Aiming for Council Time Change." But there was also another issue mentioned in the article, and that was that having elections fall in line with state and national general elections, which was already mentioned here today. One article also included comments from you, the mayor, and myself, and quoted us as saying that if changes were needed regarding the time of the council meetings, it would be good to see what the petition shows, and that we were open to discussion. And the article actually stated that discussion is actually exactly what the writer wanted. So as long as we have a short agenda today, I would like to give the public a little bit of history on all three of these issues, including why we hold our council meetings at 1:00, which has already been touched on. And by the way, Indian Wells holds their council meetings at 1:30. And so one article wants to align Rancho Mirage's election dates to the federal and state election cycle because the writer of this article knows of at least one person who forgot to vote when the writer ran for a council seat. Well, first of all, Rancho Mirage consistently has an election turnout above 50%. So there was never a reason to burden the November elections with the Rancho Mirage election, unless it was of great benefit, and many voters felt that it was a detriment. Secondly, we've all learned over the years that many voters, if they are happy with their city's successes, fiscal behavior, and the city amenities, they seem absolutely no reason to vote. However, if residents do want to vote, there's lots of emails, lots of yard signs, mailers, and advertisements helping them make their voting decisions. And having mail-in ballots certainly gives them every opportunity to remember to vote. The writer said there is no good reason for not making these changes unless the city council wishes to have minimum citizen participation and only hear from those that have the luxury of attending a meeting. And remembering to vote is an easy-to-miss special election. Being more inclusive and giving all our residents the opportunity to be involved, as well as participating in city activities, events, meetings, and commissions, is always of paramount importance in Rancho Mirage. And that's exactly why we offer so many morning, afternoon, and evening events. And we only allow commissioners to serve on one commission at a time, just so more residents will have the opportunity to serve and be a significant part of their city. And as most everyone knows, our city council meetings are only held twice monthly. So excluding residents from attending crucial city council meetings doesn't seem to happen. But what's interesting is that many Rancho Mirage residents do have full-time jobs or commitments, and some have children that would need a babysitter. However, those residents have still managed to attend crucial meetings. And most people who attend or watch Rancho Mirage council meetings know that meetings can last from three to almost five hours. And up until approximately 25 years ago, council meetings started at 7:00 PM and sometimes ended at 11:00 or 12:00 midnight. Then, because of the great demand from Rancho Mirage residents, the meeting time was changed to a more desirable time for most residents. It was also found to be more desirable for staff members for cost-saving reasons, and at that time, study sessions were held in the afternoons prior to the council meetings, where the public was open and available to speak at these afternoon meetings that were called study sessions. And that's where they could give their opinions. The dinner was provided by the city to all the council members and to staff members before going into the regular meeting, which meant that staff members were working from 8:00 in the morning, would have a break for dinner, and then they would work sometimes until 11:00 or 12:00 midnight. So that's an additional reason why the 1:00 council meeting time was selected. Also, something that was mentioned are the demographics of Rancho Mirage. And we do know that younger people are moving into Rancho Mirage, which is wonderful. But we also know, as was mentioned, that the Del Webb Senior Development, with its 1,025 dwellings, will bring to Rancho Mirage between 1,000 and 2,000 residents, 55 years of age and older. And if you Google Rancho Mirage, the website statistics show that the average age of a Rancho Mirage resident is 64.7 years of age. Also, there are many seniors and many others who want daytime meetings because it leaves them free to attend evening events. And please know, there are a huge amount of very important evening events and activities in our desert. And not all evening events or activities are social or entertainment-related, some of which are school educational events, school sporting events, parent-teacher events, church and synagogue events. People like to have family dinners. Parents very often need to assist their students with homework. And many people attend night classes. They attend their book club meetings. They go to educational programs at our observatory. They go to chamber business events. And many people need to extend their own workday to their evenings at home. Then there are birthdays and anniversaries. And if you do include some social, musical, or fundraising events, there's the McCallum Theater, three local amphitheaters, club events, LGBTQ events, museum events, art gallery events, wine tasting events, and it goes on and on. And in total, there are over 980 events in the desert every year from October to June. And many of us attend or stop by two or three events in one evening. And if you have any doubts about the number of events, let me show you just 113 organizations holding these events, which is only a fraction of the total number of organizations in the desert. So if you just take a quick look, here is one list of some of the organizations. I know you can't read it, but it gives you a good idea of that section. And then there is this list. And as I say, this is only 113 organizations in the entire desert that are showcased here. There are many, many, many more. So if we were to have our council meetings in the evenings, which of these events or charities should residents abandon? Should they give up College of the Desert? Should they give up Desert AIDS Project? Palm Springs Museum? Or the Desert Symphony? Because we know they are not about to give up birthdays or anniversary celebrations. And they for sure won't give up helping their kids with homework or doing work in the evenings that are related to their day job. So those are more of the reasons we continue to have afternoon meetings. But one of the most important reasons to provide afternoon meetings is so we can hear all the voices needing to be heard. Voices of those who can't drive at night, voices of those with disabilities, who might not go out at night, and those who don't even have a car and depend on others for a ride. So sometimes we just need to make a special effort to hear the voices of residents who don't have the ability of attending an evening meeting. And the city of Rancho Mirage has been making that special effort without being required to do so for approximately 25 years, simply because it was the right thing to do for our residents and for our budget. So let me show everyone just how compassionate and forward-thinking Rancho Mirage really is. Because I would like to show you two sheets. And you can see on this one, it says, "Planning Accessible Meetings and Events." It's a toolkit. It's put out by the American It's put out by the American Bar Association Commission on Disability Rights. And it's a section of individual rights and responsibilities from the American Bar Association. And this is a twenty-three-page document. And what it says, and this is the overview, I won't read the whole thing, I'll just read the highlighted part, which says, "During a lifetime, most everyone is likely to experience a disability, whether due to aging, a chronic disease, illness, or an injury. Every reasonable effort must be made to ensure that no person with any type of disability is prevented or discouraged from attending and from fully and equally participating in the meeting or event or any part of it." And it also says that note that some individuals may not disclose their disability-related needs. So meeting and event planners should be proactive in addressing potential barriers to participation. So that is a crucial part of why we also, twenty-five years ago, even before it was put in print like this, we chose to accommodate people who needed to hear their, have their voices heard. So yes, ladies and gentlemen in the audience, for those who are listening or watching on our RMTV, Rancho Mirage started envisioning the future from its inception and chose to change our council meeting time for all the right reasons. And as always, we will continue to give truthful information. We will continue to correct false accusations. And we will call out destructive speech against this council or staff members at every opportunity. Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, Ms. Smartich. Anyone else? I just, I will. If I may go.
You may, you definitely may.
Well, thank you. I was on mute, so I didn't get to you in time. I apologize.
Listen, Charlie, come in late, come in early, I don't care. You're on base.
Well, thank you, everybody. It's amazing to have to address the issues coming forth against this city council. And so early in the game to have to set the record straight to correct misinformation. A campaign e-blast for a time change in the council meeting was sent to the residents of Rancho Mirage recently, however, a bit of misinformation was in the blast. Also, there was a published in the column in the local newspaper by a guest columnist, and I quote from that article. "The three incumbents of Rancho Mirage's council have no intention to run again in 2022 after their terms are up." Don't know where that came from. Didn't come from me, I can guarantee you that. But so back to the situation at hand. This petition states that the council should change the meetings times from one o'clock in the afternoon to five or six in the evening. Reason: That more young Rancho Mirage residents can attend those meetings. The latest 2020 census that I looked up, now Rancho Mirage is still in the sixty-four point seven up to sixty-six percent of our major residents as adults. This time slot has been in effect since nineteen ninety-seven. That is over twenty-five years without a comment from any resident. You change it until now. Why do you ask, is this coming up now? Well, for the publicity of future running candidates for this council. I will show you the clip and the picture that was used for the e-blast that went out portraying this lovely lady, which you will see, featured in the e-blast, standing at our podium. Shown is a profile of a resident who, by the way, doesn't even live in Rancho Mirage. Would you please run the clip?
Good afternoon, members of the greatest community in the world. This city is an example, not only for California, but for the entire nation. And I applaud you all because it is your work that has transformed this city into what it is. I am being discriminated in an awful manner by one of the retailers here. And I'd like to know if you can advise me as to what to do. I buy these things, like I said, to hand them out, to give them out to people who are less privileged. And I'd like to know if this body can help me somehow. The story is, and I don't want to divulge the name.
He has some staff here.
Mr. Quintanilla?
And he said that they would be glad to discuss that issue with you from a legal perspective.
Yes, sir.
And you have the city hall telephone number?
You have her card.
May I?
Yeah, why don't you just make it easy? Don't do it today, he's going to be tied up today, but.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Dana. Now, let me explain a little blackouts. I had that taken out because I didn't want to make reference to the business that she was talking about in respect to the business. But however, as you see, the person whose photograph was placed in Mrs. Spade's message was not here to complain about the city nor to complain about the council. Rather, as you see, she appeared before this council seeking the council's assistance on a matter that was dear to us and hurt her, and that we took so seriously that we asked Mr. Quintanilla, our city attorney, and our former city manager to discuss it with her and help her, which they did. I just find it distressing that anyone would go as far as using a snapshot of a person completely out of context to spread contempt against this city and this city council, when the reality of the situation is the person in the snapshot came to see us seeking our assistance, and we promptly responded to her concerns by having our top two city officials meet with her and help her. It's just terribly unfortunate that anyone would try to exploit the image of any individual who appears before this council for political purposes, for their own needs, and particularly one who trusts that this council enough to seek its help, in which we provide it. The clip speaks for itself. Rancho Mirage does have a heart and thought. We do listen. And I'm also very glad to see the entire demographics of the Coachella Valley changing to younger families. That is good news for not only Rancho Mirage, but for the growth of the entire Coachella Valley. And I, with the rest of the council, I'm sure are open to what is best for our city and its residents. I'm sure we are not opposed to listening, to changing the time slot, but we must keep in mind the demographics, what we talked about here, and the other reasons that my fellow council members have already mentioned. I'll go into them here. Changing for time to one, from one P. M. was greatly explained here. And it was also, I believe, by a vote of the residents of Rancho Mirage and not the city council who requested this change, just as an added anecdote to what I'm saying here. And it wasn't for selfish reasons in nineteen ninety-seven is rewarded by some things that were read here from the podium. I know that we will always work with a respect to each other and all of the issues that come before us keeping Rancho Mirage the best city in the valley. However, dealing with misstatements, outright falsehoods, only to gain headlines and demean the trusting resident for selfish ill gains, I assure you will not go unchallenged. Thank you.
Unless anybody wants to add to what they've already said, let me just comment that I couldn't agree more with my four colleagues. Richard didn't speak, but I guess I should say my three colleagues. The points that have been made were essential because we're moving into the political stage. When you see certain people appear before the council and telling us that we're not doing something quite right, you know it's time for politics. Well, just getting ready for a campaign, the city is, in my view, the best managed city in the valley, probably in the whole state. We've done more things for more people with extra money that we've had, surplus, not extra, but surplus. We couldn't do more. And we couldn't ask for a better issue than somebody coming in here and saying, "Our main issue, we don't think you should start the meeting at one o'clock. We think it should be at seven or seven thirty." What nonsense, utter nonsense. Your politics, and it shows you, they really don't have any issues. I'm talking about putting together things like this with all of the staff behind us that are requiring when you stay open, when the city is open. Anyway, I applaud the three of you who spoke, and I couldn't agree more. You hit the nail on the head, it's politics time. And we now know what the first two issues are going to be. And we will see those issues repeated and repeated. But it doesn't change the fact that after a considerable amount of time in that, we set our times for starting our meetings, what, forty years ago, has worked perfect until this coming election time. That's just part of the front of politics. You don't have an issue, you got a day again. A couple people would do it. Anyway, I congratulate the three of you on these issues and also Ron Scherel, is the name of the fellow who spoke earlier, not from the public, saying this is the best city of all. I think it is too. It's not going to be improved, but it sure isn't going to be improved by having meetings at seven or seven thirty. And it's just utter nonsense. Anyway, okay, we'll move along. City manager.
Hey Dana, Dana.
You're ready to talk.
Dana, I'm the fourth candidate out here, fourth contributor. Hey, listen, I agree with everything that you said and everything that fellow council members have said. Been on the council for over twenty years, haven't had one person come up to me and say, "Well, I want to change the meeting time because of some specific reason." People love our meetings at the time that they are. And given the election that comes up every two or four years, people in Rancho Mirage really get the benefit of having us separate. They can analyze the various issues, and they can vote their heart, and most of them vote their heart with Rancho Mirage. So we've got a great council, people talking about the elections already, they're just worried that they're not going to be heard because our council will certainly overwhelm them in any debate or discussion. So all of you out there in Rancho Mirage, there are the mayor and the four constituents, as he said, even though he said three. But I'm totally in support of our council. Twenty years, you couldn't find a better council. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Richard, and my apologies for not realizing you were waiting for the propitious moment to come in. I thought you was off the dial, but no, you got me good. Thank you. Okay, let's move forward. City manager comments.
None today, Mr. Mayor.
No, no, wait a minute. Say that again slower.
What? What? No comments?
Nope, not today, thank you.
Okay, well, we'll accept him at his word. Actually, we have a motion with respect to the minutes, please.
I will make a motion to accept. You're forced. Second.
And what is the count?
Councilmember Kite?
Yes.
Councilmember Smartich?
Yes.
Councilmember Townsend?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Wile?
Yes.
Mayor Hobart?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. And now move to the consent calendar. Isaiah?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, you have seven items on your consent calendar for consideration. Item number one is to waive the full reading of all ordinances introduced or adopted pursuant to this agenda. Item number two is to adopt ordinance number one-one-seven-seven, second reading, amending section ten point six zero point zero-two-zero, speed limits designated of chapter ten point six zero, speed regulation of title ten vehicles and traffic of the Rancho Mirage Municipal Code. Item number three is to adopt resolution number twenty-twenty-one, next in order, approving vehicle miles traveled thresholds of significance for purposes of analyzing transportation impacts under the California Environmental Quality Act first revision. Item number four is to appoint Mr. Dell Smith to the City of Rancho Mirage Traffic Safety Commission. Item number five is a receive-and-file of the comprehensive annual financial report for the fiscal year ended June thirtieth, twenty twenty, and other related audit reports. Item number six are contracts. Item number seven are demands. And staff is available for any questions before we go to the council. If there's any member of the public that would like to speak on any of these seven items, now is the time to do so. If you are participating remotely, you would hit the raise hand button on the Zoom platform. Or if you're on your telephone, you would hit star nine to alert staff that you'd like to comment on one of the consent calendar items. Before we go to the remote audience, is there anyone here in person that would like to speak on any of the consent calendar items? Okay, seeing no one here in person, we will go to our remote audience. Mr. Brad Anderson, go ahead.
Hi, Brad Anderson. I live in the city. I would like to speak on item number three and number four. I'll keep it brief. Item number three, again, I think I mentioned this at the last meeting, I don't believe this is a non-con, or consent item. It should really be an asking item, I believe, or some other category because it is not just a general business issue. And item number four, I talked about that at the last meeting too, about appointments and transparency of the city. And again, I have no idea who this person is, and I don't, I'm not saying that they're not qualified or anything like that. But my issue is that it needs to be more transparent. Was this put out for a reasonable amount of time for candidates to apply and items like that? And, 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 and that's it, I guess. And then the council comments, I have insight on everything that was spoken about, so please reach out to me, and I can definitely fill everybody in. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. The next speaker is Michael Schneider.
Good afternoon. I wanted to second the ask for more transparency on these commission appointments. I applied to the traffic commission. I have no idea if anyone even looked at my application. I didn't know when. I didn't know when it was going to be appointed. I just happened to see it on the agenda. And also, I wanted to understand if there was a process to be sort of next in line in case there's another vacancy. So I would really appreciate a greater understanding of the process you guys go through, the thought process, diversity requirements, if there are any. And again, if it would be possible to, I guess, be on the waiting list for the next vacancy. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Let me just, let me just say that we don't have a waiting list. We take the applications at the time the vacancy is there, and we consider those applications. So if somebody had made an application to a particular committee, you'd have to make it again later if you didn't secure the nomination originally. So just don't want you to make the mistake of not getting another application and worrying if you have an interest.
Yeah, and Mr. Mayor, the city clerk will follow up with the speakers to provide an overview of the process that the city does go through for these commission appointments. All right, seeing no other members of the public that wish to speak on the consent calendar, I will turn this over to the council.
Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, before a motion, may I merely mention that on item number four, I'm proud to have nominated Dell Smith for the Traffic Safety Commission. Dell has represented over 100 California local government jurisdictions during his time in Washington, many of them in the traffic safety area. I'm very pleased that he's willing to serve, and consequently, I'm proud to make that nomination. In addition, I'm also pleased to approve the, make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, all those in favor, yes, opposed?
Okay, Christie, go ahead and take the roll call, though.
Councilmember Kite?
Yes.
Councilmember Smartridge?
Yes.
Councilmember Townsend?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Wile?
Yes.
Mayor Hobart?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. Okay.
We will now move on to reports and informational items. Item number eight, our representative on the Palm Springs International Airport Commission, Commissioner Bill Reason, come on up. Thanks for being here today.
I'm pleased to be here. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, city council members, Mr. Haggerman and his staff, and residents of Ranch Mirage. So I'm here to let you know the latest, what's going on at the airport. My last report, if you recall, I told you that Tom Nolan resigned as the executive director, and the assistant executive director, Ulysses Agary, was subsequently appointed by the Palm Springs City Council as the permanent executive director. So we have a new executive director of the airport. The passenger count, as you probably realize, the last year has gone down significantly. Last April, the passengers' count were down 97%. Really, almost nothing. And now they're starting to go up. I think right now we're right about 50% of what we were a year ago. So as an example, in 2019, we had 2.5 million passengers, and in 2020, we had 1.3 million passengers. So that, that's done quite a, has had quite an impact on the airport. Recently, several airlines have reported that they're going to cut back on, on some of their flights, especially to Canada. So hopefully, next season, when next season starts, we'll get back, back to normal. And the good news is, as you know, Southwest Airlines came to the airport a few months ago, and they serve Phoenix, Oakland, and Denver. And they just announced they're going to increase a flight, one more flight to Phoenix. So they have three, three flights to Phoenix, and the current two each to Oakland and Denver. The projects going on, as you recall, the ticketing wing expansion and the baggage screening project going, they're going very well. The lobby area is almost completed. And if anybody's been to the airport terminal lately, I'm sure you've noticed the huge increase in space of that, of that lobby. So that is just about complete any day now. As far as the baggage screening, that's behind the scenes, where the public doesn't see what's going on. But it's quite impressive. I was able to take a tour by the airport director a couple of weeks ago of the, of the entire project, the back, back scenes. And I was impressed at the amazing, high-tech, sophisticated system where all the bags are screened when they leave the ticket, ticket booth. They're electronically sorted, screened by the ATS, and they're delivered to the appropriate airplane, airline via three large carousels in the back, very similar to what you see at the baggage claim area. It's too bad the public can't see what's going on back there because it's an impressive, high-tech system. The car rental area expansion that was planned last year is still on hold. Nothing's going on there. As far as the budget, the financial situation, the budget is still in pretty good shape considering what's happened with the COVID situation and the lack of revenue. But the city airport has received FAA grants of about a million, yeah, $11 million last year, and just recently, another $4 million. So that's really helped with the reduced revenue that the airport has experienced. Well, one more thing. As you know, I've responded to several noise complaints that you, that you have received and passed on to me. And I believe I've answered their concerns fairly satisfactorily. But recently, the, the airport, in partnership with the FAA, has opened a noise complaint hotline at the airport. And it's available on the airport's website. So when you do get someone complaining, in addition to calling me to see if I can resolve it, there's also that source for them to, to try and find, to resolve their concerns. And like I said, it's on the airport website. And if you want, the, the number is 760-318-3800, extension 5276. Again, that's 318-3800, extension 5276. But it is on the airport's website. Which, if you haven't seen the website, it's, it's pretty interesting. It's all about the airport. So with that, that concludes my presentation. If you have any questions or comments, I'm here to answer.
One thing I'd like to say, Bill, is thank you for a job well done. And you've been very informative and really kept us and the city well informed on detailed stuff that's important to the traveler and to the citizens themselves. Wish you all the best in your new adventures, whatever they may be. And be sure to drop by and see us from time to time.
Yeah, well, Mr. Mayor, I'm not finished yet. I've got another four months to go. So I'll be back again at least one more time to give you an update before I, before I'm termed out.
Turned out. Yes. Hey, Bill, this is Richard. Just want to thank you for the great job you've done. I'm glad you moved some of those planes to apply to my house recently. So thanks for that extra job that you do, getting those airlines to look after the people down on the ground. And by the way, anybody that's interested in fulfilling their position should send the city an application, and we'll make that decision in the next few months.
By the way, when you speak of that, Richard, I was at, we had a commission meeting yesterday, a Zoom meeting, obviously. And it's interesting, there was a couple of commissioners who their term had expired, and the city that they representative, represented had not backfilled it yet. And so they just continue on in that role until that position is, is backfilled. So you might keep that in mind. Anything else?
Yeah, hey, Bill, I have a question. When do you think all of the remodeling and the changes will be finished? Do you have any clue?
Yes, the, the ticketed wing should be completed within, right away, within a few weeks, I would think, at the most. The vaccine baggage screening area, they say, should be finished by July.
Very good, very good. Are you having a champagne busting opening when this all happens? Or are you keeping it quiet?
I'm not sure.
You can have a Zoom one, a Zoom champagne meeting.
Well, we'll have to talk that over with Ulysses, our new airport director.
Very good. And Bill, I just want to tell you that the times that you've been on that commission and being our representative, you certainly have taken such great pride in it. And it shows your enthusiasm and your warmth. And I know you will miss it, but you know, we're always going to be here for you. And there might be some other things that you could apply for too.
Okay, well, thank you for those comments, Charlie.
Okay, and Mr. Mayor, can I make a comment also? Because Bill has been so charming and so informative. Every time he gets up to our podium, he answers questions that have not been asked, but a lot of people have in mind. So you've done a fabulous job. Whenever you do leave, we're going to miss you. And, and know you're always welcome back, and we appreciate every, every bit of morsel of information you gave us. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Iris, for that comment.
You are welcome.
Thank you. Bye.
Thanks for the report. All right, we will now move on to item number nine on our agenda, the Action Calendar, which is our COVID-19 State of Emergency Update and Related Action. And Gabe Cottin, our Director of Marketing, will handle this presentation. Gabe?
Thank you, Mr. Haggerman, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, residents. We're coming before you today with information. No action deemed unless there's one that we feel necessary. So just a quick update on the city's programming. We, our testing center at the, at the library and observatory, as you've, as you've been aware, we've been testing since December 1st, five days a week in line with the city's hours. It's Tuesday through Saturday. And to date, through today, we've, we've conducted 30,000, almost 500 tests, so 30,500 tests. This week alone, we've done about 1,200 tests. Our, over the 80 since days since we've launched this, we've had a positivity rate of about 17%. However, this week is about 7.8% of those tested. So there's some good signs there, that the positivity rate's gone down pretty significantly just this past week. Our Great Plates program is, was, was extended to March 8th. And FEMA also confirmed this past couple of weeks that they're going to be taking care of 100% of the costs of that program. So the city initially, when it launched and agreed to be the administrator, that came with a 6.25% fee, administrating fee, that the city would have been covering, which would have equated to, to date, to about $320,000. So now FEMA has confirmed that they're going to be covering 100%. So we are, we are still the only city. The county has not continued the program, so we're the only one in the area that is doing that program. And to date, we've, or projected through tomorrow, we'll have delivered about 233,000 meals to over 371 at-risk seniors in our community. And that's driven about almost 5.1, a little over 5.1 million to local businesses for those meals. So that program continues through March 8th, and then we'll, we're waiting to see if that'll be extended. But the good news is, is that those funds that we had committed to paying, we won't need to anymore. So the program has been a great benefit to our community. And as a reminder, on, on Friday, January 15th, we launched our City of Ranch Mirage Small Business Grant Program. We had about 72 applicants. 52 were eligible and qualified. So we've paid out about 372,500 to those 52 businesses. And there's four more that have received conditional approval. They either had a business license expired, or they had a, they needed some, some form of documentation per the eligibility that their, their business was approved, but they needed to get their paperwork in order. So we've given them conditional approval. So once that becomes current, we will, we will make that grant to them. That concludes our COVID-19 update for, for this meeting, and I'm available for any questions or comments.
Thank you for the staff report, Gabe. Let's go ahead and open up the public comment on this item. If you are participating remotely and you would like to speak on this item, now is the time to do so. If you're on Zoom, you would hit the raise hand button on the Zoom platform. If you are on the telephone, you would hit star nine. Before we go to our remote audience, is there anyone here in person that would like to speak on this item? Okay, seeing no one here in person that would like to speak, we will go to our remote audience. And Mr. Brad Anderson, go ahead.
Hi again, this is Brad Anderson. I live in the city of Ranch Mirage. Great report, the Great Plates Program, which has been an asset to this city. It's great that they're going to pay 100%. It's going to be a moneymaker now for the city, along with the ambulance service. So, and the 52 businesses, that was rough as of having the paperwork in order and $300-plus thousand that's going for those. That'll be interesting to see who those are later on. But that's great, 52 is better than nothing. And, and that's all I have. I think the Great Plates is a good program. And I know I've, I've mentioned that before concerning the waste that might go along with that. And, but I'm sure people will throw food away. They probably give it away, which is probably better. But, and I would like to speak on close session topics when that come available. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Seeing no other speakers, we will close the public comment, and I will turn this over to the council.
Okay, well, if no one else has a comment, I would like to thank Gabe and his entire department for this Great Plates program supervision. It has been absolutely amazing. But I also want to thank his whole department for the newsletters they put out. They're beautiful, they're informative, they touch on every subject matter that anyone would be interested in, and people absolutely love them. So I want to thank everybody who has worked on all those programs and information obtaining, because it really has made a difference. Thank you again, Gabe, and thank your whole department for me.
Sure will, thank you.
Gabe, I have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
In going past the library a couple of times today, I've noticed that the line of cars for testing has really gone down substantially. 10 or 12 cars in there where there used to be five or 10 times that amount. At what point do we decide to stop doing the testing and let other parties do it?
Yeah, that's a great question. So our, our arrangement with Curative, who is the testing administrator and has taken over the county sites, that when they, when we originally, when our city manager approached us, and we were the first city to launch that testing with Curative, they were hoping for about 300 per day. The demand for the Mid Valley in our location was so strong, we were, ended up doing 6, 700 a day, and we were doing hundreds and hundreds of walk-ups. So we're averaging now about 300 per day. And so they said that demand is still really strong, it's still needed. We're still the only Mid Valley location. So our agreement with them is through the end of March, as long as we're meeting a demand of average of about 200 to 300 per day. If it dips below that, we will, we will phase it out over the course of a week. We won't abruptly stop it, but we've agreed with them that we would phase it out over the course of a week and communicate that appropriately.
And just to add to that, the relationship with Curative and the city has been very beneficial. It's provided a convenient and easy testing experience for not only Ranch Mirage residents, but our surrounding communities. And one of the things that Curative is approved to do is give vaccines. And so we have been talking to Curative about potentially transitioning that site to a vaccine site. Obviously, as we've all seen and heard in the news, vaccines are currently in short order. But in the long term, as supply of the vaccine increases, we have the potential to utilize that existing relationship and the setup that we have there on site and potentially transition to vaccines when there's more supply.
Thank you. Anything else from anybody? We will ask our city attorney to inform us through that again.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The city council at this time is now going to recess into closed session pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D1 regarding the following four cases. And it's vacation rentals, owners, and neighbors of Ranch Mirage at all versus City of Ranch Mirage, hometown colony versus City of Ranch Mirage, Save Ranch Mirage versus City of Ranch Mirage, Horizon Pacific Ranch Cove versus City of Ranch Mirage. I should just point out that I just keep these on the agenda just in case there are any updates. So I don't want anybody to think that there's a lot of action going on with any of our current litigation. A lot of it's just kind of been held in abeyance because of the, the COVID pandemic. But those are the four cases that I'm going to present to you in closed session.
We will now adjourn.
Mr. Mayor, we did have a member of the public wish to make a comment on the closed session calendar. So before we adjourn, let's go ahead and take that now. Brad Anderson, go ahead.
Hi again, Brad Anderson, City of Ranch Mirage. I just wanted to comment on the vacation renters lawsuit, or potential lawsuit, I think. Anyway, or litigation against the city. Hopefully, hopefully you can come to some conclusion. I don't think you will. And I just, and I know you had prior lawsuits concerning the same issue with the age restriction, which is surprising. And, but anyways, there's a lot more to that, and you know that. So hopefully you can conclude that, but you won't. I understand that you adjourned the meeting already. So anyway, I will wait on the phone for the, for the council to come back and adjourn the meeting properly. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. All right.
I'm not quite, I'm not quite sure what has been done improperly. But let, let me, because we're not going to come back into session after we've had the information and report from the city manager. So, Mr.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, after it's closed session, we do come out and have a post-close session report. And the last few times, yeah, the last few times, there's been no reportable action. And that's what's announced.
And that's what I report out.
Okay.
So we will, the city council will now recess into closed session. All right, it is 3:25, and the city council took no reportable action on any of the closed session items. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.